July 1st, 2014. Business meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. Could you guys turn yours off? Mine was off.
Yours wasn't on.
Mine was off. Well, we'll start again. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the July 1st, 2014 business meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have a quorum of members present, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. To begin the meeting, I'd invite everybody to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd first like to introduce a new face at the DIAS today. I'd like to welcome Coleman McHose, who is our new student board member. Welcome. We look forward to having you onboard, and please don't be shy about jumping in and participating in anything you think that we need to hear from you about. Any comments you'd like to offer? All right. Well, welcome. I'm sure all seven board members here would be happy to provide you any input, or help, or any assistance as you take your seat in your new role. So, please don't hesitate to reach out. Are there any other guests or students that anyone would like to introduce? Okay, that brings us to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as presented by the Agenda Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, and seconded by Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion, or are there any amendments to the agenda? If not, all those in favor of approval? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. That brings us to minutes.
Mr. President, I move for the approval of minutes from the board's closed session on Tuesday, June 17, 2014, and also minutes from the business meeting of the same day.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Brightman. Is there any discussion, or are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of Mr. Bailey's motion to approve? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. That brings us to public comment. We have one individual who signed up to speak. I don't see Mrs. Allen here. Okay. With the consent of the board, we'll table that item until later in the meeting. If she does show up, we will give her the opportunity to speak at that point. Is there any objection to that from the board? Okay, fabulous. That brings us to new business. The first item is the consent agenda.
Mr. President, we have to hear from Mr. Michael first.
Oops.
Dr. Michael.
Dr. Michael. Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. We have seven action items for your consideration today. The first item is our security camera system and service contract. This is a renewal. The items were put out to bid last year, and this is the first of several renewals that we have the opportunity to take advantage of. We're suggesting that we continue with Atlantic Security Systems Incorporated, and the amount of money will not exceed the budget unless additional funds are transferred into the budget line for that, for those services. The second item we have is heating and oil renewal. Again, an item that was bid last year in cooperation with the City of Hagerstown and Washington County Government. So, this is the second year, or first renewal. We have another renewal after this that we can take advantage of. We're recommending that it be awarded to both James River Petroleum and East River Energy. One for the purpose of tank wagon delivery, the traditional oil truck that shows up to your house, and the other for tractor trailer deliveries. The pricing for this is a price above the price in Baltimore at the time of the market. They generally take an index of that on Monday, and then we receive that price from Tuesday to the following Monday, and this is an add-on to that amount. So, it's not a locked-in amount per gallon, but a guaranteed price for delivery overhead insurance, those types of things from a contractor. Our third item is our Teachcape. Again, this is a renewal with Teachcape Incorporated. We have two components of this. The one component is the evaluation tool where we collect information during observations, evaluations, and walkthroughs. And the second component of that is the professional development tool that can be used both by teachers, also by administrators, to help calibrate and make sure we're consistent in our evaluation and observations of teachers. The price of this has come down significantly from last year, and that's because some of the work that we had Teachcape do for us last year, setting up accounts and those types of things, we've absorbed in-house and helped to lower some of that cost. We have 18 new computers for our gaming development and animation program at the technical high school. Pretty high-end, powerful computers. They're coming off a contract. You'll see three POs before you that were requesting your combined approval, an amount of about $43,000. And they're to Hartford Computer Group Incorporated. Also, end of the year, Mr. Akers did an evaluation of secondary schools, and those were the highest need. He's purchased 312 laptop computers that'll be distributed to various secondary schools, many of those in laptop carts that can be used for park testing and other testing needs. Our sixth item is replacement of air handling units at Hancock High School. I believe the units are original to the '68 version of the auditorium when it was added, and at this point, the units are starting to fail, as well as pans and things underneath them, so they have served their useful life at this point and need to be replaced. Recommendation to replace them to Bowlin Train. Again, that is on a contract price. And our seventh item, network switches. You've seen these before, where we've gone through our schools. In addition to access points, we have the need to upgrade our switches, which allows the, you know, to maximize capacity within the building of our networks and our online devices. And again, this is Skyline Technology Solutions, another same company we've used for other switch purchases, and that is also off a contract price. So, with that, we'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have. We're requesting your approval of these seven items.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I would like to read into the record the motion for approval of these items. Motion would read, "To approve the bids for security camera systems and services. First renewal of Atlantic Security Systems, Inc., and heating and oil. First renewal to James River Petroleum at .1450 gallon for tank wagon delivery. And East River Energy at .03290 per gallon for transport delivery. Contracts for professional development and training online modules to Teachcape Incorporated in a total price of $101,550. Requisitions: 171-523, 171710, and 171655 for computers for the CGDA program to Hartford Computer Group at $43,194. Requisition 171-768 for 312 laptop computers to Hartford Computer Group at $225,264. Proposal to replace air handling units at Hancock Middle Senior High School to Bowlin Train at $139,425. Requisition 171-843 for network switches for Springfield Middle School to Skyline Technology Solutions at $55,877.22. Recommend approval, Mr. President."
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, and seconded by Mrs. Brightman. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brightman?
Basically, if we look at Project Five on the list, the 312 laptop computers, I guess I'm trying to figure out if we're looking at laptops versus tablets and iPads, and whether laptops become a problem sooner, that technology is different with the iPads and tablets, and whether it's better to be updated, to update those and that device. I'm a little concerned about whether we're looking at a one-to-one for devices with our students, and I just, I know in the last couple consent agendas, or last few, we've had quite a few devices, so I was just trying to figure out where we were headed there.
You know, and I think one of the tasks that Dr. Wilcox has given our new chief technology officers, certainly to look at that. I think the tablets have their place right now, and I think the laptops have their place. If we could choose not to purchase desktops any longer, we probably would go with all laptops. The purchase price for desktops are significantly cheaper, and of course, they're hardwired, and we're kind of set up for that. I think we're trying to move more and more towards laptops and tablet-type devices.
And tablets, okay.
But I think we need to defer and wait for a report from Mr. Corns on the future expectation. But I think these have been reviewed by Jim, and fully in support of the purchase of these, and the necessary need for the laptop carts, and makes available, and helps us out with park testing immediately for next year, as well as daily use in the classroom.
I didn't know if these were in the pipeline prior to Mr. Corns' input, so that's, I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
The security camera system service, system and services, when you're bidding on both the materials as well as labor, I think sometimes that kind of makes it a little bit difficult to determine which is the best offer. But I noticed that Atlantic Securities' labor rates tend to be significantly higher. So, why did we go with Atlantic instead of, I don't know what the other really is, ASG?
As we bid projects over the last year, and that's one of the difficult parts about some of these unit pricing, you know, I might bid $42, and I think that's one labor rate there at the top of the sheet. I mean, I might bid $42 an hour, and I bid the job to take two hours. The other company bids $20 an hour, but it takes them 20 hours to do the job. So, suddenly, the balance swings the other way, maybe through efficiency, or knowledge of the person, or whatever, but it is difficult to make those comparisons. What we did last year is we bid several jobs using unit pricing consistently. Atlantic Securities beat out the other company.
And the other thing I was wondering about, I know we do a lot of cooperative purchasing from other LEAs, government agencies, and so on. How can we be sure that the price and quality that is the best for, say, Carroll County or Allegheny County is also the best for us?
We look at specific details of what it is we're looking for, and look for someone who has bid that type of unit, not, we're not doing it the other way around. Oh, here's a contract, we'll buy what they bought. What is it that we want to buy? Is there an agreement out there already that someone has purchased? And then use the power of volume to take advantage of, you know, unit pricing. I just had a conversation with Mr. Corns a few hours ago, where we're talking about access points, and some of the things Baltimore County's currently doing, where they have a very large contract that they purchase some access points. We might look at that for the future to take advantage of their purchasing power and piggyback on that. So, piggybacking allows us to get what we want, hopefully at a volume discount, take advantage of somebody else, having done a lot of the legwork to put the item out to bid competitively bid, and it meets state requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Dr. Michael, the replacing the air handling equipment at Hancock Middle Senior. Bring me up to date on the upgrades that have been made there in recent years. Didn't we just recently do something with air conditioning and?
We did do an air conditioning project throughout the classroom section of the building. The science wing did, air conditioning was added there when we had the science renovation back in, I want to say 95, or it might have been 2000. I think the auditorium was added on the '68 edition of that building. I'm not sure. There's a '56 original construction of the building. I don't think the auditorium existed then. We've done window and door replacement there, roof replacement, so we've done quite a bit of work there in the last couple of years, particularly to the omelet for the building.
You answered my second question. The original building has a 1956 date?
Yes.
Original construction?
'56 edition in '68, Science Wing in '95.
Building's getting old.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Harson?
I had a question again about number five, the laptops. How near to our goal for providing some kind of computer for each of the students for the park assessment does this bring us? I know that there was some problems in the high schools with people being displaced in order to use the computers that were being used for classes that required computers, so there were days that they were kind of put out and not able to teach what they had been planning to teach.
Right. I think that's one of the challenges, it's kind of been an ongoing challenge. How do we have enough computers available to every classroom that no one needs to be displaced? You don't need to go to the computer lab, you don't need to bump the people from the business lab, something like that. So, this certainly helps. The other thing that's going to help us tremendously is we get keyboards for the iPads. Those are approved, but without the keyboards, an iPad can't be used for park testing. So, we're going to, we've ordered more keyboards for the computer, and not keyboards like attached keyboard, it has to be, has to be a hook to it, or a disconnected keyboard. So, I think we're moving closer. I think we have a ways to go, but we can, with inconvenience, we certainly can get through park testing. Our goal is to try to make it that it can be more convenient, especially as we get more and more years of the park testing phased in.
Do we need to look for other funding sources for that, or?
I think we are, and we need to continue to look not only for devices, but also access points and switches. It's the infrastructure. This is the sexy part of it. This device is the sexy part of it, but if there's a whole infrastructure behind something that's, particularly something that's not hardwired, that we really need to look at and make sure we have that infrastructure built as well. And we're doing both.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? I see that four of these purchases are coming out of the FY14 general fund. Today is the first year of FY15. Happy New Year, everybody. So, can we approve today a purchase out of the FY14 general fund?
Yes.
That doesn't cause an audit problem or something for us?
It'll take them a couple of months to close out the books, but the purchase orders are prepared and ready, to my knowledge.
Okay. Baywood? If there are no further questions, the question is on Mr. Bailey's motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you. I see that Mrs. Allen's arrived. If it's okay with the board, we'll go ahead and move to public comment, and we'll invite Mrs. Allen to come and give you a presentation. As long as, as long as a microphone can pick you up, because we are on TV, so if you could sit down, that might, that might help, make sure that the people at home can hear.
You're welcome to come up here and take the picture, though, if you'd like. You can step forward and take. Yes, we may.
I wanted to thank you. I'm really saying thank you to Mr. Ebersole here, because he runs a wonderful program with the We the People program that we have through Washington County Schools. And because of that program, we were able to help out in a donation of 300 pocket constitutions for the children. They can be given those after they finish their We the People competition. In the past years, they've had that at Salem Avenue Elementary, and also at the Junior College, where I was lucky enough to serve as one of the judges. And I was most impressed with the content of the curriculum, as well as the students' performance. And it's through his extra efforts that this is off the ground, and so I think we are very, very lucky to have Mr. Gene Ebersole here with Washington County Public Schools. That's my plug for him. So, again, I want to thank you for having the program. On behalf of the Hagerstown Tea Party, we are happy to donate these to our kids, because this is, this is what it's all about, and they need to know this. And we're just very excited that Washington County Public Schools sees the need to further this in the educational process of the social studies curriculum. So, thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Allen, too, for volunteering to help with our organizations, with our activities as a judge, but also donating to our students. This is very kind of her, and she's going above and beyond what, what we expect from our judges and from our people that get involved. So, I'm very appreciative that we have people in the community who are willing to come, step forward, and help with our social studies program. So, on behalf of Salem Avenue and our Washington County Social Studies Department, I thank Mrs. Allen and her organization for donating these pocket calendars to our students. Thank you very much.
Once I saw this in, in actual how it all worked, it was so amazing to me to see these young students at this age coming with a little desk, with their nameplate, asking, answering pointed questions about the Constitution, about the checks and balances, about how our nation was formed. And I thought it was so inspiring to me, as a citizen, to see the magnitude with which that these children are really going in depth with the knowledge of, of our history. And, you know, because of that, I got very excited, went back to our board and said, hey, we got to do something to encourage the continuation of this program, and we'd like to, you know, do whatever we can to help foster that program and make sure that it stays in place, because it is, it is wonderful.
And again, thank you. She has donated calendars several years for us now, so.
Constitutions.
Or constitutions, I'm sorry. Constitutions, several, several years for us. So, again, I really appreciate that.
Well, it's a great program, and we're happy to do that. You know, whatever we can do to help is, is what we'd like to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your involvement. Any board members? Mrs. Brightman?
I can't let an opportunity pass that I don't support or speak about We the People as a program in this, in this county, and thank you, Mrs. Allen, for, for doing this as well. Mr. Ebersole and I have known each other. We've gone through several We the People competitions over the years, and Washington County, and I've forgotten the other Maryland team, was one of two.
George Blake, George Blake High School?
George Blayton, represented Maryland at the state, at the national We the People this year. So, Washington County almost always turns out a pretty exceptional team, and I agree with you. When they can discuss things like the Fourth Amendment, which is a very big issue right now, and make it relevant to today, it's, it's pretty impressive, and I would encourage everyone to attend those competitions and witness our students. It's pretty, pretty special. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much, Mrs. Allen, and thank you, Mr. Ebersole.
Thank you, Gene. You know, an interesting thing, since I'm not giving a superintendent's report, I'll take a bit of personal privilege if the president will allow it, and simply say, you know, somebody sees a presentation like this, and they may think that it's just a wonderful thing, but behind the scenes, there are a number of other things going on. One of the conversations that we had with our administrative team this year, and with some of our curriculum supervisors, is how important it is in this school district to continue to teach cursive writing. And you might say, well, what's that got to do with the Constitution? It has everything to do with the Constitution, because if you can't read cursive writing, you can't read the Constitution, it's an original script. So, again, we're trying to make sure that our young people not only see these original documents, but they have experiences and the skills to take advantage of them. So, once again, it's part of a much larger picture in the county. So, thank you.
Next, we have personnel action. Ms. Francisco?
Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review today.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to accept the personnel actions as recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion? If not, the question's on the motion to approve personnel actions. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member abstains. Thank you. Reports to the board. We have the first of a number of reports we'll have over the next year or two. For those who don't know or haven't been following, we've asked the superintendent and the staff, and our advisory committees, really, to give us each a report on some sort of periodic of periodic basis in a public meeting, in a business meeting, so that the board can stay in touch with the work of those advisory committees. Advisory committees are made up of groups of citizens, also some might be members of our, of our staff, employees here, to give us advice and to provide input to the school system on a whole array of different issues. These committees are established by the board and they, their members are approved or appointed by the board. So in order to, I think, help the board stay more in touch with what these committees are doing, and I, I hope help the committees as well, stay more connected with their charge from the board, we've asked them to come and periodically report. So the first of those reports is today, and that is the Safe Schools Advisory Committee. And I'd like to ask Mr. Ganley, the staff liaison to that committee, as well as the members that you have here with you, and if you'd just introduce the members and.
Carrie West is a parent, as well as a teacher at Old Forge Elementary School. She's a member of our advisory committee, as well as a member of the safety committee at Old Forge Elementary School. With us is also Deputy Kenny Barnhart, the school resource officer, and works on the sheriff's office, but has many schools that he visits and helps out with their safety
In April, the elected board approved the new members to the advisory committee. And soon after that, we were able to have our first meeting. We were given an opportunity to let the new members introduce themselves to each other, go over some past agendas, see what some of the previous goals were. And we asked them to come up with some future goals and what, which direction would they like the committee to go. In May, our committee met with the gang committee, which is a representative from every middle school and every high school. At that meeting, we had a presentation from the Assistant State's Attorney, Steve Kessel. He talked about the reportable offense law, which if a student is arrested off school property over the weekend or in the evening for a serious crime or one of the crimes listed as a reportable offense, they can report that to the school to make sure that we are keeping our school in a safe environment. We also had a committee presentation from the gang task force member, who talked about how gangs impact Washington County and talked about some of the drug problems in the county. One of the most disturbing aspects that he brought to us was the heroin problem in Washington County. In previous years, heroin was, it had a stigma because it was used, it was injected by a needle and it was thought that people that used heroin were, were serious drug addicts. Now that, now that heroin can be smoked and snorted, he said it's, it doesn't have the stigma, and that might be one of the reasons why we see a rise. It's, it's more accepted, unfortunately. In June, we met with the principals and assistant principals to go over the changes to our emergency plan book, our red and green book. Gave the principals a chance to give us input, tell us what we might want to change before we go to print in August, as well as see some of the new changes that we have to make because of some of the mandates. The red and green book will always have the procedures on what we do for lockdowns, modified lockdown, weather emergency plan, or if a student is missing, what, what's our procedure for that? Those, those things didn't change. Some of the things that did change are the hazard assessment. Every school is now required to do a hazardous assessment. It will include members of the school staff, the school resource officer, and hopefully someone from the fire and EMS. Some of the, some of the hazards, the potential hazards at a school are some, it's something as simple as if it's a two-story building, what is the potential hazard if we have to evacuate? How are we going to get those students out of the building? Just have a plan and what our solution's going to be. It could be the school's location. Are we beside a railroad track? Is, is there a plan in place if there's a derailment? What do we do if there's an air quality issue because of that derailment? Another insert that, that will be included is the chain of command and the instant command structure. It's one of the big pushes from the state level. We, we will have that in every book. All staff members will be able to open their book to see who's in charge of what responsibility. One, one staff member may be delegated several responsibilities, but it tells you who's in charge. And, and when you go to school, you, you figure the principal's in charge, but who's in charge on the day they're at a meeting or if the principal's the person that's injured or something happens to the principal? It's a quick reference so you have a structure. This past summer, we were able to do tabletop exercises with the assistants of the Sheriff's Department and the EMS, members of the 911 staff. They came to various locations, various schools, and talked with our administration on some of the potential hazards. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Deputy Barnhart to talk about some of the table tops that they did. Because after we did it for the principals, they started to go into the schools and do small presentations to the staff. And then, then I'll ask Carrie to give her input on what, how those trainings impacted the school staff and some of her opinions and views on this, on the safety committee.
Like I said, I'm Kenny Barnhart. I am with the sheriff's office and recently got assigned to the SRO program. Like Steve said, in the summertime, all the administration had to go through a tabletop sort of scenario, worst case scenario. With the feedback that we got from that, we decided, okay, we need to take it to the teachers' levels because everybody has their own roles. Administrators, the administration has their role that they got to make sure gets done. But the teachers have a totally different role. Their responsibility is the children, getting them out of the building and protecting them. So I came up with like seven different scenarios, some very worst case, some that could happen every day. And I would go into, I'd contact the principal, arrange for a date and time that would suit them to come in. And what I would do, and I'd be there all day, because what we would do is we would take the teachers that were on their planning period. We took about a half hour, 45 minutes of their day and brought them in. And we did it on a planning period because if you go into one school and you try and bring the entire staff in, as we all know, you're going to have the ones that's going to stand up front and kind of give all the answers. Well, that's not what this is about because they're not going to be there if an emergency comes up. So we did it in small groups, so everyone has to participate. Because if I'm sitting in a room with you, I'm going to make eye contact with you expecting you to give me an answer. You know, I don't, if you're way in the back of a room, I can't do that. So we found that, you know, when we started, when I would start out, I would say, there's no wrong answers here. You know, the way the policy is written and everything, it's up to you how you decide to handle a situation. I'm here to maybe offer suggestions, make you think outside the box of what you can do in a situation, and just how you're going to respond. You know, what, what do you think your responsibilities are? And I found that, you know, everybody does a fire drill the same way. We stand up, we go outside, we count their little heads and we, and we flip the folder over. Okay, well, what happens if there's an active shooter already in the building or outside of the building? How do you react? You know, what was your responsibilities? We found out a lot. We found out that some of them didn't know at a teacher's level, you could throw the whole school in lockdown. So I felt it was very informative to everyone. Everyone got a lot out of it. And like I said, there was, you know, we went up front, there's no wrong answers. Some of them, I've learned some things from teachers that had their own suggestions of it very well, and they thought about this. But then there were some that didn't want to think about it, that they don't want to have these other options. And we found, and it's something that we really need to think about, is people that will attack a school are not stupid. They plan it out. And we found out going into a lot of these schools, the best time is during transitions. You know, we have plans for when you're in the classroom, how you're going to react. Well, how do you react if you're waiting to get into the cafeteria and you've got three or four classes of kids in line waiting to get into cafeteria? Where are you going to take them? And that's where they had to start thinking outside the box. Where am I going to go? If we go into lockdown, I'm not going to get into a teacher's classroom because they're going to have the door locked. So there was just a lot of different scenarios we brought up and threw at them to make them think and walk around their school, challenge them to walk around their school. And what do you have that you could use for self-defense? You know, fire extinguishers, we told them. You know, anything you can get your hands on. You know, different exits out of the building, going into the cafeteria, there's loading docks, different ways you could get out of a building in a hurry, if you had to, other than what your book said, get in line, go out the clear, closest exit. Okay? So we found a lot of good things about it. I want to continue it. And we got to remember about the substitute teachers, because a lot of times, they go from school to school and you don't know where the little ins and outs of those buildings are, or the brand-new teachers coming in. You know, it's, we have to keep up with this, and it's something that, you know, I hope the teachers continue to accept and will work with us on it.
Hi there. I'm Carrie West. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Old Forge. So good afternoon. Just to go a little bit off of the table, tabletop talks that we had had, that was the first experience I, as a teacher, I've ever sat down and done that, and it was very eye-opening. We had the kindergarten and first grade team all together and we have the little babies of the school. And so, I mean, you know that if there's an emergency, you have to be ready to, to be in charge, be ready to do what you're supposed to do. But the scenarios he had given us, we would not have wanted even dreamed of in a million years to have to be put in those situations. But it really did make us stop and think, and we really did have to answer whether we wanted to or not. Some of the answers that we had to come up with were things that we never would have wanted to have to do. And, I mean, even as a parent, I, I just can't, I can't fathom having to have one of my kids' teachers make those choices either. But in reality, this is how our world is, and we have to really look up to what these experiences are. And it made everybody really take a deep look into our own school. And again, like you said about the substitutes, that was a big eye-opener, too, because of course, you know, everybody does know to line up and go out the door for a fire drill. But all the other evacuations that we have, we practice, but they don't practice those daily, you know, or weekly or whatever, whenever they have to come available. But those opportunities aren't there for them. So that was something we had talked about as a school also. And as a parent and a teacher, I was very excited to become part of this safety advisory committee, mainly because Old Forge is an open school and a lot of questions come up because of safety, that of course, parents want to know everything. Their little babies are coming to your building. They want to know what's happening. So hopefully with this committee coming on, we can get some more answers so we'll put them at ease. It was a big eye-opener, too, to see how many people were involved with all of this emergency planning. We go through as teachers and look through the guidelines and look through the booklet, and that's our training. But there are so many more things that are done behind the scenes, which I'm getting my eyes open to, especially with listening to the gang units. I mean, I am a member of Smithsburg community, and Old Forge Elementary School is the school that I teach at. Both of those are so small. I mean, we're kind of sheltered compared to some of the downtown Hagerstown areas and the stories that I've heard once I've been there. So I'm thankful and blessed, I guess, that I live where I live, but I'm also, you know, I need to have my eyes open that there are things that will come up and they could come right in Smithsburg, too. So keeping my eyes open for that. Again, like going through and taking a little tour of the command center and seeing everything that's involved helped me as a parent and a teacher to become a little bit more at peace. It was amazing to see everything that worked so smoothly and how easily they could contact people, how easily the schools could contact here if they needed something. So that made me feel a lot better. And pretty much most of all, the main thing that I think I've appreciated so far out of this advisory committee is making sure that we get to collaborate with teachers from other schools and with the gang task force. Just hearing all these things and listening to all the different ideas that people come up with and what works for other places, because some, I mean, we're heads together is definitely a big plus, especially when safety is part of us and our children. So thank you.
I think one of the big things in closing on their part is we don't go in there with the skies falling. It's just, it's important to have a plan. We hope it never happens, but if it does happen, you don't want to spend the first 30 seconds thinking, oh, my gosh, what should I do? So having a plan is what we really stress at, at these meetings. We try to keep it positive and try to keep it so it's, it's a winnable situation. We don't go in there so everyone thinks that it's, it's impossible for us to have a plan because it won't matter, because it does matter, and we want them to realize that. One of the new projects that the committee talked about was the evacuation chair. It came up as far as what, what are some of our plans to get students out of a two-story building if there was an evacuation need and there was no elevator? With the help of Chris South, we were able to secure a $15,000 grant with Mabe, and we, we worked with Community Rescue. They demonstrated their unit at Fountain Rock Elementary School, and it was amazing how one person with, with one hand could easily take a person out of the building. And their worker comp claims have gone down because the chair takes the stress. You don't, you, the, the workers not putting everything on their back and, and struggling to help someone, help someone to evacuate or get out of the building. So we're, we're in the process of purchasing those items for the buildings that have stairs that, that may cause a little bit of delay getting people out. An ongoing project is our camera system. We discussed it earlier at meetings about the, the upgrade from the analog to the IP. Much clearer, it's similar from going to the old TV to the HD channels. The clarity is, is so much better now. You can, you can visibly, visibly see people and make identification. The big benefit and one of the savings is with, with the upgrades in the equipment, it used to take five servers to handle the, the North High campus, three at North High, one at Northern, and one at Fountaindale. With the new system, two servers at North High operate the entire camera system for the camp, campus. So we've eliminated the need to purchase three of those servers. So that's, that's been a savings. We have 28 schools that have already been converted over to the new system. We have six schools that were converting this summer, three are in the, in the plans for this school year and the additional seven for the following school year. The vestibule project started on June 18th. As you can see in the slide, some of the schools would, it would require the, the office staff to let people into the school before they would come into the office. With the new setup, the vestibule will be an area where the people can get out of the weather, come to a service window. We can offer customer service. If a student forgot their gym bag, their lunch, or homework, we can offer the service to the parent, work with them, get the items to the, the child, but not have to, to open the school to people. If a hostile parent would come in, we can talk to them and try to ease them, get, put a, plan an appointment, or if necessary, call for assistance. But they're not in with the students. We, we have them in an area where basically all they would be able to do is, is leave the building. One of our, our bigger projects was the Potomac Heights School. Potomac Heights, when you were buzzed into the school, you would have to go left before the office could see you. They had to do everything by camera. With the new setup, they'll come into the office, there'll be the window where we can offer customer service. And another benefit is after hours, when the community uses a building, like they use a lot of our buildings for, for activities, they won't be able to wander through the school anymore. They'll be contained into the cafeteria area, to the bathrooms, and it'll be much like we're doing with the new schools, where we have the bathrooms and the gym, where we can offer the community the service of using our buildings after hours, but not worry about the security or people wandering through areas that we really don't need them to be in. If the, if the members have any questions, we could.
Thank you, Mr. Ganley. And questions from board members? Mrs. Fisher?
We keep reading and hearing, obviously, about the increased drugs and gangs in Washington County. In 2002, 2006, my previous tenure on the board, we actually had a board member who was a liaison to the county gang committee coalition, whatever you called it. And I'm wondering if, for one thing, if maybe because of the increased activity, that might not be a bad idea again. Also, I'm wondering if we could have a report from the safety committee at some time in the future on gang activity and how it's affecting our schools.
And I could also ask the, a member from the task force to work with us to help with some of the answers that I wouldn't necessarily have, that he might not want to put out in the paper that, that you all would want to have available.
Thank you. That would be very helpful, I'm sure.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Ganley and Mr. Barnhart, Miss West, thank you for the work that you've been doing as far as this very important committee is concerned. You do have my thanks and I'm sure the appreciation of this board. I could do this in private, but I'm going to mention that I'm almost daily in contact with a former chief of security at Disney World in Orlando, who has just retired. And I'll make his name available to you, and he has indicated to me that he'd be very willing to help in any way that he could.
Mrs. Brightman?
Thank you again. Interesting discussion here, and I appreciate you taking time to come. Interesting, Deputy Barnhart, the two things when I was reading over this in preparation for the meeting was what about substitutes and what about new teachers? Each year, we have at least probably 100 new teachers, often more than that. And we do have a two- or three-day new teacher academy. Is this something that staff has recommended that we do sort of a, a brief training during the new teacher academy? And how do we keep substitutes? I know we train them as well. If there, do you have recommendations as to how to be sure we have that symmetry of information with new people coming in?
Well, I think it's important that if this is an invite for me to come and talk to them or give them a little thing, yes, I'd absolutely be willing to do that. But I think it's, it's important for them to be the leader when they get to that school to go, to come to like the lead teacher or somebody and say, what are the ins and outs of this school? Like I've been to some schools where, okay, there's a key above the door. Okay, that's where you got to get to to lock the door. A substitute is not going to have a clue. I can't even, you know, I can't go into the board and say, and talk to the new subs. I can't even, you know, I can't go into the board and say, and talk to the new subs, this is where your key's going to be. It's going to be a priority of theirs when they get to the news, to the school that they're at, to get with the teachers in their, their department and say, don't forget me if something happens. Or, you know, and I've got the book here, but that book doesn't tell the little ins and outs of a school. So I think it's, it's a, it's going to be, have to be everyone playing a part. I'm willing to go in and give them a talk, give them the, what they need to think about. And it's also going to be on their part to get with the principal or the teachers, and it's also on the teachers' part that are at that building to take them under the wing and help them out.
So someone needs to take the lead at each school to be sure that information. Okay, good. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, looking at the schedule here for transitioning to the new camera systems, it looks like 16 schools that, that have yet to be transitioned. Six, six this summer, three for 2014-15, and then seven for 2015-16. Is that right?
Yeah, that's the plan. As we, as we deal with electronics, we don't always stick to the plan because a school that we think's going to be next, if the, if the server over here decides it's, it's finished, our priorities sometimes have to change. But our goal is, well, this summer, we already are in the works of, of transferring the six over, and Clear Spring Campus would, would be one of those. So they would go in and do that entire campus at that time. So when, when they go into a campus, like they're, they're finishing South High, a lot of those schools will be online as well. And then we'll go out to the smaller elementaries that have the newer systems, and they'll, that's why they're on the bottom of the, of the list. They have the, they were the last ones to get the camera systems that were, were getting away from. So they have the newer, newer systems of the old version.
So you're comfortable with this schedule in terms of safety of our students and ensuring that, that we have the best possible systems in place?
I think we're doing, doing fairly well. The, the elementary schools that have the older systems don't draw the, the amount of memory and, and have the problems that some of the larger schools have because of the number of cameras. So we, we have converted some of the smaller schools because as, if, if a server goes down in, at, at one of the small schools, we, we haven't fixed them. We've, we've bumped them up on the schedule. And our technology department's done a great job. They've been able to take some of the older servers and basically take the guts out and rebuild, which is a, a great cost saving. So that speeds us up on, on our replacement. So it, it, it's possible that, that it will not take us two years to, to make that. But I, I can't, I can't say that one way or the other, but we are, we are pushing to move. We're fat, we're farther along than I thought we were. We've, we've had a lot of, a lot of success working with the technology department and, and getting a lot of those rebuilt servers out there that we, we were hoping they would be servers that could get us through until we could purchase new ones, but they did such a good job with the rebuilds. They're, they're just hanging on, and we're, we're sticking with them. So we're real happy with, with that as well.
Thank you.
Mrs. Harshman?
I'd just like to say thank you too, to the task force. I'm elated that you're doing this work. When I was at North High, we were instructed not to lock our doors during the day, but in order to lock the door, you had to go outside the door, which made the whole point moot if you were shutting down the building, because teachers would be in the hallway trying to get the doors locked. So things like that really need to be addressed, and I'm glad that someone's doing that. And I appreciate your work and your concern for the safety of our children.
Other questions or comments?
I too want to thank you all for your work, and particularly the, sort of the stories you've relayed, Deputy Barnhart and Mrs. West. It's a balance you have to try to create in many things in life, but in, in this case, you know, we want our schools, of course, first to be safe. But we also want them to look like places that are inviting and welcoming and that foster learning. And there are a lot of trade-offs that one could make regarding that. Some, I think, are pretty obvious. The vestibules make a lot of sense, the cameras. And I just appreciate all of the work that people don't see that goes into trying to make them safe environments that don't also make them look like they're prisons, which is, is not what we want. I mean, we want schools to be places that kids are running into as well as sometimes running out, just because of the type of environment that it is. So thank you all for keeping that in mind, and, and we don't always discuss all the things that go on in all the schools. That's frankly why we have all these advisory committees, so that they can focus very directly on the issues, family life, facilities, and in your case, safety and security. And it's important for the public to know that all of this work is going on, even though it may not be in front of the board every week, every month, or every year. As you've looked, as you look out at the other challenges that are out there, you've mentioned drugs, some of the gang activity, are there any other sort of emerging security and safety challenges in the community that, of that sort, which are more societal, that you see coming over the next months, years?
I, I think with, with the meetings that we have, we're, we don't, it's not like we're, we're finding out a year later what's going on. When we meet in Annapolis with, with the other school districts, we hear what their trends are, and, and we can come back and, and discuss the trends. Everything that we talked about today, some, some have, have been as, as early as, as last month on, on what are some things we want to look at. So we're, we're continuing to look at, at problems as they come up. But again, I, I think we're very proactive, and we're, when I, when I look at some of the issues that other counties have, we, we are doing a, a really good job in Washington County with the, with the support of the superintendent and the elective board. It's, I think, I think we're, we're headed in the direction we need to be.
Great. Mrs. Brightman?
Yeah, just to follow up, something occurred to me. I know recently we had some flooding up at Clear Spring, and, and we opened up our schools to the community. And on any emergency type of arrangement or, how are schools being used in an emergency situation to help with the sheltering and, of the community? Do, I assume we have that planned with the county and, and municipalities? How, what does that look like? And is that something this committee hears about?
We, we have already discussed that at our early committee meetings, and we, we're in communication with the 911 Center on some of our issues and our concerns, what are their concerns, and, and I, I think we work well together. Some, sometimes you, you, you might not look at things the same, but we can come to a conclusion that's going to be for the best of the community. In, in the case of Clear Spring, when it was initially started, they used some of the smaller facilities. But when it became a bigger crisis, the school was available. We had staff that was there at the school, we had staff respond to the school. Even, even something as simple as food services, we had Jeff Brew checking in every few hours so we could be a, a good partner with the feeding and, and kitchen facility. So it's, it's been a pretty open communication.
And, and of course, school was not in session during this particular situation. How do we handle using schools as shelter when we indeed were having classroom schools?
We're, we're working with the, the 911 Center on that as we speak. That's, that's one of the concerns, that, that we want to make sure we don't give up the ability to teach students when we need to keep our kids in school, to keep a normal environment so that the parents don't have to, to take off a day's work if, if there's an emergency because their kids are staying home. But if, if it becomes a disaster in the community, and it's, for example, Katrina, we're probably not going to open schools on, on those days. But if, if the school is open, and we're, we're working in, on, with them to find out what are some alternatives that we can use in, in the primary? And then if it gets to the point that they need a, a school, what, what can we do to be cooperative and, and assist them with their needs as well?
So a protocol where certain buildings would be ranked in a certain level of use? Okay, great.
What building would cause us the least disruption and give them the service they need to provide for the community?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Again, thank you. I, I have children in public schools, every, everyday schools in session, and I never hesitate to send them because it, I feel safe that, I feel confident that they're going to be safe in that environment. And that's because of your work, Mr. Ganley, with the support of your committee. Every parent, I think, breathes, it comes up a little short when you hear that your kid's school's on lockdown or something like that. But it's, I know just this type of work that you do that prepares the school for that. And by the way, all the people out there who send me an email when the school's on lockdown, I don't know why. And I shouldn't, because you should all be doing your job and not worrying about letting us know. But I think you do a great job communicating with the public and, and ensuring that the kids that we have care for every day, 22-plus-thousand students is a lot of people to take care of, not to mention the staff members. And again, I, and I think you can tell the board really appreciate all you do to make that so. One last question. Do you, do you keep minutes of your meetings?
Yes.
You do? Are those forwarded to somebody on the staff, or can they be forwarded to members of the board?
Yes, I think they're in the board docs.
Okay, that's great. All right. Thank you. Thank you all very much. That brings us to board committee reports. I'll start with Mr. McHose. Usually we receive an update on student government during this part of the meeting. I imagine student government hasn't met since you took your seat.
No, we're having our Fall Leadership Conference Retreat on Jul-, July the 8th, and it's going to be for overnight at Fairview Outdoor School. We're going to, it's where the whole, every SGA across, every SGA across the county is invited, and we work on leadership skills and just building SGA around the county and relationships throughout. And that's, that's pretty much all we have coming up so far in the off-season of the school.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Harshman, curriculum?
Curriculum instruction is scheduled to meet in August, I believe the fourth Tuesday is August 26th, 11:15 in the board conference room, and the agenda will be posted.
Mrs. Williams, finance?
The finance committee will meet on July 22nd at 3:30 in the finance conference room.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, policy?
Policy committee will actually be meeting tomorrow at 10:30 in the boardroom. Tentatively, we're also scheduled for July 22nd as well.
Mr. Bailey, facilities?
Facilities has been in recess this summer, and will resume probably the fourth Tuesday in August.
But I should add to your report, Mr. Bailey. I drove by Bestre this afternoon, and destruction or the demolition has begun. So thank you to the facilities committee.
Thank you.
The building is coming down.
Some are going up and some are coming down.
Save me a brick.
Yeah. There was an interesting article in the paper the other day too about South Potomac Junior High.
Sunday's paper.
Yeah, Sunday's paper.
Front page.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes, the HR committee will meet the 22nd at 10:30, I believe it is, in this building. Thank you.
And Mrs. Brightman, orientation?
Yes, the ad hoc committee on orientation met this morning at 7:30. We discussed two policies and regulations and the calendar to meet the deadline, which was part of the charge for this ad hoc committee. We'll be getting some first drafts back or second drafts on those policies at our next meeting, which is July 15th at 7:30. And I believe they will be going to the policy committee, Mrs. Fisher, following that. It may be so sometime in August.
Not till August?
Well, if we, if we look at them on the 15th, if they're ready to go at that point, then we'll move them on to you the end of July. But I, we, I can't guarantee at this point that there won't need to be another meeting after the 15th.
Okay.
Anything from any of the MAVE committees? Board of Directors or Orientation? Mrs. Williams?
I have a report from the...
Not Orientation, I'm sorry.
Conference Planning today. Yes, we met on Monday, the 23rd of June, and I have some brochures that I'll be giving to Mrs. Chekovik to put into our mailboxes. The conference is scheduled for October 1st through the 3rd. And Mrs. Harshman and I, along with Patty Nally, a board member from Anarundel County, will be manning the registration desk. So we're looking forward to taking your registrations on the 1st. Also pleased to say that Washington County will be presenting a hot topic, and I look forward to, to that.
Great, thank you.
The only other Board of Directors meets July 16th.
Anything else from any of the committees or... All right, that brings us to future agenda items, a few items from agenda planning this morning. We're, of course, meeting on the 15th. We're going to have many, it looks like many policies to consider, many second reads as well as any new first reads that might come out of tomorrow's policy committee meeting. We are scheduling on August 5th a work session to discuss the student achievement report. This is a continuation of something we started last year, which is rather than having the discussion on MSA results, HSA results in a business meeting, rather to have it in a work session where there's chance for more dialogue, more back and forth, and more information to be presented forward. So that'll be on August 5th at 9 o'clock. And the August 19th meeting, we're going to have a report on the minority recruiting task force. We had considered having that in September, but because of some scheduling issues, we've decided to move that up to August 19th. So that will be during the business meeting on that date. That brings us to board member comments. Mr. McHose?
Yes.
Mrs. Harshman?
Nothing at this time.
Mrs. Williams?
Nothing.
Mrs. Brightman?
No, sir.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Bailey?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
I have nothing?
I'll take that back. We almost made the time. I don't know how many people are aware of this, but during the crisis in Clear Spring, flooding problem, Mr. Bathgate, who is a football coach up there, contacted some of the ballplayers about helping out with getting rid of debris. And he thought maybe five or six of them would show up. 25 members of the football team showed up. They worked all day long hauling trash out of places where they had been condemned, damages done. They located one lady who, whose house was condemned. They had to, she had to move. She had no one to move her. The boys got trucks and stuff and moved her and her furniture and belongings to the new place. They worked all day long, and I would very much like to see somebody, either the mayor of Clear Spring, somebody from the, the school system or whatever, somehow thank those boys publicly or do something for them if that's at all possible.
That's a great idea. Any other comments, board member comments? After that story, I don't think I have any either. That's a great way to end the meeting. So if there's no further business, I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
No, that's funny. They did that. Oh, shit. Oh, my God. Thank you. 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 Thank you.